Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll start the meeting now. It's our custom to start our meetings with an invitation and a pledge of allegiance. If you would like to join us, please stand.
And let us pray. Heavenly Father, we love you and thank you, Father, for this day and each and every day. Father, we ask you to be with this committee tonight. Pray for us, give us wisdom, Father, let us be open-minded, open-minded. Give us patience and understanding as we address the business before us tonight. Father, we pray for our elected officials, we pray for our colleagues in the county government, those folks that give us time and their patience and their dedication to serve us, Father. We ask you please to protect our first and smartest that protect us on the daily basis, Father. We pray, we just pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we'll have a discussion. The planning commission will review and discuss a comprehensive plan update that is currently being undertaken by Glen County.
Good evening, Chairman Uster and Planning Commissioners. As you stated, the county is currently undergoing a comprehensive plan update. Every jurisdiction in Georgia has to do so every five years. Our comp plan has to be updated by October 31st of this year. And so, we've asked the Coastal Regional Commission, who has a wide variety of experience in helping jurisdictions update their comprehensive plans, help us this year. So, I'd like to introduce Ian Kellert, a planner at the Coastal Regional Commission, who will start the presentation.
Can you hear me all right? Thank you, Maurice. As Maurice said, my name is Ian Kellert. I'm a regional planner. I'm also a GIS analyst. I work for the Coastal Regional Commission, and I'm going to be the one primarily responsible for updating your comprehensive plan along with my colleagues. So, tonight, we really want to focus on land use. Obviously, Planning Commission, specifically, DCA mandates that each jurisdiction has to have some sort of descriptive land development element in their comprehensive plan. Glen County has elected to do the character areas route. We have them up here. We could get them up on here as well. Yeah, if you want to click on the link right there. But they're also before you on that as well. So, character areas, briefly defined by the Department of Community Affairs as specific geographic areas or districts within the community that have unique or special characteristics to be preserved or enhanced, such as a downtown, a historic district, an arts district, et cetera, has the potential to evolve into a unique area with more intentional guidance of future development. Village, or an area that requires special attention due to unique development issues, rapid change in development patterns, economic decline, et cetera. For Glen County, in 2018, they identified 17 character areas, 16 plus Jekyll Island. Obviously, Jekyll Island is not under the purview of, you know, land development from the county. So, really, just 16 that are going to be, you know, mainly focused on. And you can see them all laid out there. In each of these character areas, there are going to be three distinct elements. So, there's going to be the boundary itself, so whatever geographic area it covers. If there's going to be a narrative description attached to it, and we have that there. And then, there's going to be some description of zoning permissions. So, it doesn't strictly have to be zoning, but that's what Glen County elected to do in 2018, that's what they elected to do in 2023. And those three elements are what comprise the character areas element for the comprehensive plan. And again, this is what DCA mandates they want to see. So, our job right now is reviewing what happened in 2018, seeing if there are any adjustments that need to be made, again, to the geography where it covers, the narratives, so the description, the issues, or the zoning permissions. Those are the big, you know, overarching things that we want to really focus on. So, talking to the planning commission, obviously, you can offer input on any of these aspects. We have, you know, a couple, I have a couple broad questions that I can ask to kind of help you along about, you know, what changes you might want to see. But I, you know, first want to open it up to you all if you have any questions about the comprehensive planning process, you know, what character areas are, anything like that, and I can try and explain.
Commission, you have any questions? How are the boundaries determined?
All right. So, the boundaries that are currently in place are what were decided in 2018. And really, it's going to come down to a lot of subjective thinking when it comes to it. DCA has guidelines for determining what character areas are, but it really comes down to the community. So, you know, for example, Oak Grove is a character area right here. And obviously, that's an island. It's a pretty distinct geographic area. It meets the qualifications for, you know, it requires special attention due to unique development issues. There's going to be unique development issues strictly from being an island, you know, in the middle of the river. So, that's a pretty obvious example. But other types, you know, boundaries are going to be set, you know, traditionally, they're set on geographic boundaries. So, a river would be a good choice, you know, where the land turns from being developable into being marshlands. So, you know, where it needs mixed use to coastal marshlands. The interstate highway is a good example of where to put a boundary at. But it really, it comes down to the community's preference, you know, where the stakeholders feel that, you know, these areas represent a similar enough, you know, distinctive area.
So, these are just loose guidelines, really?
Yes.
So, those are the boundaries, well, for instance, when there is not a river or a highway, I guess that boundary sort of shifts as planning goes on?
Yes. So, they're not tied strictly to like parcel boundaries or anything. They're deliberately not tied to parcel boundaries, unlike a future land use map would be.
Right.
So, character areas, they are reference guides. You know, obviously, the zoning permissions they have in there are, you know, set to be implemented by the IPC, the MPC, you know, to take into consideration when you get something like a rezoning request. But they are, again, they're broad character areas, they're broad areas, they give leeway, they give, you know, discretion to local jurisdictions for where they want to see development and what types of development they would be.
So, unlike the comprehensive plan, this is sort of a long shot of the way things are right now, correct?
As it is currently right now, but also, part of this process is going and reevaluating every five years and seeing, you know, for example, Country Club of States currently, it does not permit, maybe that was a bad example, Southwest Glen, that's a better example. Southwest Glen, their only residential permission is R-20. You know, right now, so by the standards of the book, if someone wanted to rezone into R-9, it would be conflicting with what the character areas states in that area. So, if you see in the future an R-9 or an R-6 being a more likely or a more desirable development pattern that you want to see in that area, then this is the time to say, hey, this is, this needs to be updated. Again, you are obviously our IPC, you don't deal with Southwest, but that's just an example.
Right. So, this is, this becomes part of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
The blue area, like right south of the mid-island, I guess, and that's also an employment center, like the airport area?
It is, yes. Yes. The label, I didn't want to put it on because it would be too big, but yes, that is correct.
So, when this becomes part of the comprehensive plan, then these boundaries are very meaningful, like you suggested, a country called the state with only R-20.
Yes, yes.
So, the comprehensive plan, I think the way I was editing it says now, we would have to go through an updated comprehensive plan in order to change, in order to change that ruling right now from R-20 to allow an R-9.
An amendment process, yes. That would be, that would be the avenue that the county has to go through to revise their comprehensive plan, yes.
Commission?
All right. Well, I can start to go into a couple of questions, and these are very broad questions. Interpret them however you want. They're just to gain your feedback and really be instructive for when we go into, next week, we're going to be having the fourth stakeholder meeting, where we're going to be talking about land use with commissioners, you know, representatives from different organizations and meeting. Robert is on the stakeholder committee, he will be there. He will be able to bring your points and concerns, as will I. So, first off, zoning permissions is what we were talking about a little bit earlier. Do the zoning permissions that you see on here, so I'll be on your second sheet on the far right, I know there's a lot there, and you don't have to answer, you know, today, you can send an email, I can get you my email address. Do these match the development patterns that you are seeing currently? And this would be, I guess, strictly in reference to the island.
Right. So, this is then our charge, I guess, if you will, would be to take a look at the map and take a look at these issues in these various areas and make sure they align properly.
Yes.
And if we have some issues, then we can.
Yes.
Correct.
And again, it's a lot, I know. So, you can take these home, you can email me, or we have a QR code on here, and if you want to scroll down to the very bottom, this is the website, it's an interactive version. Actually, you can also just click the submitting comments and revisions at the top header right here. Yeah, scroll down from here. So, I've developed this form, and this is free for anybody to use, members of the public, but also stakeholders, public commissioners, county staff. And it's just basically for you to submit comments on it. So, if you want to click character areas, what components Glen County would like to comment on?
Character.
Yeah, character areas over here. And then, does your comment on character areas relate to a specific location in Glen County? Click yes. Scroll around. So, then it brings up a map, and this is an interactive map, the same as what you have right here. And what you can do here is you can actually draw a point, if you double-click, and you can save a geographic location so that when you submit a comment, we know where it's in reference to. So, we had a comment earlier, someone put a point on Blythe Island and said, we think Blythe Island should be its own distinct character area. And that's going to be the conversation that we're going to have at stick with the meeting is, all right, should Blythe Island be its own character area? And we can discuss the merits of that and what the development strategies and zoning permissions would go into that. And then, if you want to scroll below this, sorry. And then, describe the comment or suggestion you'd like to receive incorporated into the 2023 comprehensive plans, character areas, and type there, and then you can submit. So, that's an avenue for you to do. You can also email me, it's completely fine. I put all the emails into a big bucket, so we can draw from. So, that is question one. Any questions about that? Any questions about how to use the website? This has a lot more information about the character areas and also, you know, a brief introduction to land use, you know, et cetera. Yes?
Sorry, I may have missed it as I was looking at this pretty chart. What is the overall timeline for the refresh?
Sure.
Did you already explain that? I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's completely fine. So, the end due date for the comprehensive plan to be completely finalized, adopted by the Board of Commissioners, and sent off to DCA is October 31st of this year. We are planning on having a draft completed by the end of July so that we can go through a proper revision process, where we send it off to DCA, they can send us their comments, we can send it off to the stakeholders, members of the planning commissions, county staff, to review, make suggestions for changes. So, that's that buffer. But end of July is where we're targeting for having, you know, the broad strokes of the plan laid out. There's obviously going to be tweaking that goes on afterwards, but that's when we're planning on having a document that people can review. In terms of the character areas specifically, we are going to be discussing them with the stakeholders at the stakeholder meeting next week on Wednesday. You're more than welcome to attend. It will be at the airport of Brunswick on the mainland. It'll be on the second floor of the conference table, and I can send out that information afterwards. But that's what we'll be going over, character areas, we'll be going over any discussions, any comments that have been submitted so far, and then we can really dive into it there. But I'm, you're more than welcome to send suggestions afterwards, and the time for us to review them all and see, hey, which ones do we or do we not want to, you know, address? That would be, you know, when we send out the initial draft. And someone says, well, you didn't take, you know, this, you know, suggestion in or whatnot. And that's when we can really sit down with county staff and the steering committee and say, all right, how would you like it to look?
Speaking of the comment input process, I sat on the 28 team, project team, and, you know, we got, we had, I don't know how many hundreds of comments, and then they were divided by character areas. It was very difficult to go through these comments and, one, understand them, B, validate them, and then, and we ran out of time, to be honest. And then, suddenly, some of these comments kind of became guiding principles. And there may have been only one person that put a comment in, and that, you know, not every content was fleshed out, but suddenly found ourselves thinking or believing, hey, that was an important comment. And I think, look, all citizens' comments are important, but obviously, you know, we have to evaluate them. So, how are we going to get through that this time?
Sure. So, the, what we're planning on doing for the next stakeholder meeting next week again is organizing all of the comments that we've gotten on our end so that when we provide them to the stakeholders, they are able to be easily understood, you know, we're able to kind of sort out. And this isn't to like censor anyone or anything, but it's sort of to be that first, you know, filter to see, you know, what, obviously, if someone says, you know, I don't think there should be any character areas, and I think that, you know, the entire St. Simon's should be one character area, it's like, obviously, that's not realistic, you know, that's not something that's realistically going to happen. And so, we can kind of sort that out beforehand for the stakeholders, and then we can address the comments that have specific targeted points that need to be addressed by the stakeholders. But we're hoping to get, you know, 95, 99% of the actual, you know, descriptions, issues, permissions done at the next stakeholder meeting so that when we get to the revision or the revision process in August, we are able to say, the stakeholders signed off on this. You know, we don't want it to be that we finished the meeting and we've left off a couple of character areas, you know, we want to make sure that we get to all of them so that whatever we go back to when we're writing the draft has the stamp of approval of the stakeholders, so that we, when we present it for the county commissioners, we're able to say, this is reflective of the stakeholders, this is, you know, reflective of what they want.
So, I'm sorry, if I ask one more question.
Sure.
Is it the real output, the future land use map? I mean, that's what this will impact? And is the CRC going to be responsible for updating the future land use map, or is that back to the county staff?
Commissioner Duncan, yeah, I don't know if you heard Ian earlier, but state regulations require that the county have either a character area map or a future. Right now, is to have only a character area map, like the city of Brunswick and like Camden County.
So, it's up to the board of commissioners to decide.
Sure, yeah, it's not a done deal that there's only going to be, right, yeah.
Okay. That's where we get hung up, is on this land use map. I mean, we get crazy about going from this to that land use map, which governs our zoning decision.
Yeah, and that's the benefit of going with something like. That we thought was going to be, you know, basic industrial, we think a better use for it is actually local, you know, commercial. While you're not limited by your future land use map, as long as that permission is in the character areas in keeping with that general area, then it gives you the discretion to be able to say, all right, then that's what we want there. So, that is the benefit of going with something like a character area approach over a future land use map. Now, if the county would like to pursue that in the future, they're more than welcome to. But again, DCA only requires that you have one of those elements.
Thank you. I think that clarifies a big question I had.
Sure, absolutely.
By and large, the other character areas are determined by history, correct? I mean, the by what is right now and just putting that in, and putting that on paper.
In a large, in a large way, yes. You know, like, like the village, like, that's a historic district, you know, it has its own unique character to it. It's obviously, it's going to have its own unique zoning. Like, in the zoning ordinance I was reading, you know, you have, you know, village mixed use, it's only used in the village. It makes sense that you have a distinct character area where that zone is allowed. A lot of it is. A lot of it is newer, though, you know, something like the mixed use character area, that's because there's a lot of development going up west of the interstate, and so it needs to be a little bit more flexible about what's allowed in there, and the boundaries are going to be a little bit more fluid to change. But like, yeah, something like Oak Grove or, you know, North Island, like, that dividing line in north of Frederica Road, like, that's a pretty well-defined historical area to use as a reference.
Right. Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is in terms of, in terms of future, that this does not really address any new ideas about how a character area might change to a better bit.
Well, Chairman Uster, character areas don't only have to reflect what's going on now. State regulations say they can also be areas that have the potential to evolve into a unique area with proper guidance and development.
Right.
Yes, so.
But what we're seeing right now, though, is not.
Right, yeah. But yes, they can have elements of future land use per se.
That's something that the stakeholders might insert into this, correct?
Absolutely. And you all are free to insert into it as well. You have opinions, you're residents of Glen County, you have a vested interest in how the development patterns, you know, proceed, so it's something that we're looking to hear back from you all as well.
Right.
Next question that I have would be variances and reoccurring issues. I know we talked a little bit about, you know, future land use and, you know, clearing that up, but are there any current reoccurring issues that you're seeing before the IPC that is related to, again, we talked about future land use, but is related to, you know, restrictions that you have about what you can and can't do in certain areas and, you know, development patterns and your discretionary ability to be able to implement, you know, development in the county?
Right. Well, that would be infrastructure, and then as well, marshlands and wetlands would be limitations that we'd have to review anytime something comes up for us. Principally, on St. Simon's, drainage is the biggest issue. And maybe some other things that we've seen recently.
I think that the village, in the preservation area, having to come in front of us for paint colors and roof and other simple items that are not dictated, you know, by the county or that need approval. Because we find a lot of that, and then also on the flip side, we have a lot of people that don't know that they're supposed to come to us, and they end up having, you know, a stop work order until they can come in front of us and we confirm their paint color.
Is this just for the village or?
Just for the village.
Okay.
I wanted to mention, on the island, we actually had kind of another layer of character area, like village, commercial, kind of retail areas. That's not reflected in this chart, because it's too small or?
The village commercial, is it like a district, like an overlay district?
Well, it was. Village mixed use is.
Well, we have, obviously, the village mixed use preservation district here, but there are a couple of areas, primarily on South Island, like Dimmery and Frederica, that area was a character area, okay? Arle Road and Dimmery, sorry, Ocean, although if you're familiar with some of these streets, that was a retail character area, if you will. So, I don't see the sub areas reflected here, and I'm just curious what the thought is.
I'll have to go back and look at the data that I was provided, you know, from what I could tell. At the end of the day, those areas, those sub areas, they're not DCA mandated, so they are, they do not have the force of, like, a proper character area with zoning permissions in it. It's more of guidance, you know, rather than more than anything else. I know that there was one area that I left off, and it wasn't an area per se, but it was the corridor, it was the scenic corridor. And I left that off because it was overlaid over top, and I wanted to make it as, you know, simple for you all to understand so that you don't have, well, you know, in this broader area, you know, such and such zoning is permitted, but in this other one, you know, it says that it isn't. You know, so I'll go back and I'll relook at the data source and see if I've missed anything. But as it is right now, the, you know, DCA just mandates that every inch of the county is covered, and, you know, that's all they really. is, is covered, and, you know, that's, that's all they really, you know, care about at the end of the day. All right. The last question that I have, again, very broad, you know, any recommendations you would like to be brought up at the Stakeholder Committee meeting, either next week, or we're going to have another one in June on the Community Work Program, which is going to be implementation strategies, it's going to be, you know, build a road here, install a, a drainage pipe here, a lot more granular down to, down to earth, but either for that, or, you know, just in general, that you would like to inform the Stakeholder Committee of, you know, again, we talked about some of the reoccurring issues that you've been having, but things you think it's important to have in the plan that are not currently reflected?
I think, I think in general, one, one thing on St. Simons that, that has had a huge impact since, well, I guess, the last four or five years, is short-term rental. And some, some, something that, something that gives us guidance, right now, short-term rental is allowed in just about any district that's residential, across, across the county. And I think, I think there needs to be a, a reckoning with that, as, as the overall impact going forward. St. Simons, obviously, has had a huge impact, but it's coming to the mainland as well. And I, I think, I think there needs to be a, a more of a discussion about the impacts, the potential impacts.
Okay, for sure, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that next week, absolutely, I'll bring it up. Okay, anything else that you would like to be known? Again, we have the web app up here, you can just scan the QR code if you want to submit comments, or you can email me, it's completely fine. We also have on this application a way that you can check and see specific zoning, where they are permitted in the county, so if you're interested in say, where is basic industrial allowed, you can hit a switch, it's on a map further up, if you want to, if you could go to character areas. Scroll down a little bit. Or actually, actually scroll up, I'm, I'm trying to remember where, where it's, where it's, no, it's broken down, I'm sorry. I, I moved, I moved stuff around to make it a little bit clearer, and obviously, I tricked myself. Here it is, so this map right here, you want to click it? And you make those, uh, a little bit easier, it's good to work. Give me a little trouble if our layers aren't loading. I think the internet's down at the office. Well, that's fine, normally it'll work, I'll double check in the morning to make sure that the layers are coming up, but it will have options on the left, all the zoning categories in Glendale County. Oh, there we go. Is it okay? Let's go freeway commercial. And that'll show you all the character areas that freeway commercial is currently allowed in, in the county, give you a bit of a, an idea of current permissions, so, when it's cooperating.
Yeah, those, but those are very large areas, though, obviously, and so, and so the actual zoning freeway commercial would have a very specific area that it would be allowed.
Well, obviously, not, this is just one part of the thing, of the many things, so this would be, be mostly for the entity to, to, to go over, but it's just one of the things that beats into their decision-making on whether or not to approve a, a rezoning request. You know, a better thing might be, if you want to turn this layer off and go to, scroll down, and go to, let's go with R nine, I think R nine is, yeah, if you keep scrolling down, it could be more to, R nine. So, here's where like R nine is, is permitted, and you can see, so R nine is currently not permitted on North Island, but it is permitted in Mid Island. And again, that's a decision that you can take into your planning and your building approvals, when it comes to it, and, you know, whether or not you feel like that is appropriate for development habits that affect your decision.
You click on R, R six.
Sure. One-click it, and then click R six.
Let's see what that looks like.
So R six is permitted, uh, everyone on the island except for South Island and the airport. Is it a useful tool? You're able to access at home, and see, you know, you can be flipping through these, and then if, if one just catches dry and says, whoa, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, submit a comment.
Right, well, that's, well, that's one area, yeah, the reason I chose R, R six is R six is no longer allowed on St. Simons.
That is, that is true, I did read that in, in the orders, but it is, is a character area.
It is, it is, it is in the character areas as, as an existing district within that character area.
That was one of the ones I was going to bring up next week, you beat me to it, but it's something I was going to bring up to say, why do we have still character areas if it's no longer allowed?
Right, and, and that, and that is a question, I, I mean, we've got, where R, R six is not allowed, and then in certain areas, we have multifamily is allowed. Obviously, R six is, is a less dense use, and density is a, is a factor on St. Simons. So there's, there's questions there in my mind, it was, but that change came about as, as a knee-jerk reaction because of some areas we were having trouble with, existing R six areas, not so much new R six areas, there weren't any, but as, as we had trouble with existing R six areas, they decided, well, no more. Well, I'm not so sure that was the best way to approach it, but anyway, we have what we have now. But yeah, that's a question, a question for us, I guess, planning commissioners, how would we like some of these areas?
Well, that, again, that is a resource that is available to you, feel free to look at it in your, in your, in your free time. I want to open it up, any last questions that you have, again, about comprehensive planning process, land use in general? All right.
I think, I'm sure we may have folks here that may want to chime in.
Sure, sure, so we'll open it to the public, I, I
Ladies first.
All right.
In regards to this particular mapping and planning that was based on 2018, right? How many inputs did you get from the residences of the county overall?
For 2018? I would have to double check, I believe it was over a thousand, that was on the, the survey.
And how many inputs have you had?
We've had about five hundred and ninety so far, that was what I checked right before the meeting, so.
What is the total population of this whole area?
Of Glendale County is eighty-five thousand.
Okay, so, less than a one percent input from residences, right?
While it would not be restricted
Then, then, then my, my question then is, how, how adaptive is this to what the residences living here are, are asking? Are you addressing the infrastructure, the, the, the road system, the conservation land and, and marshland and all that?
Do you pardon me, ma'am, could you state your name so we can have it on record?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I should, I should have asked.
Incapital, hey, you guys, that's a problem after this, huh? Lon Schaefer, I'm, I'm new, I, I just moved here in May, so, but I, I love this area, thank you, and I just wanted to get an input on what, you know, what, what's going on, and learn what's going on in, in the area.
Sure, sure, thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much. To address it a little bit, so we have a couple of different avenues of public input, we have the community survey, that's, that's one of the best ways to get in contact with us, and we're making all of those comments available for the members of the Stakeholder Committee to review. There's also participating at public hearings like this, we've had, uh, public listening sessions, we've had, you know, a public hearing already, had a work session, public is completely invited to attend the Stakeholder Meeting, if you'd like me to, I can send you an invite for the, for the next one, next week. We have been looking at getting comments regarding the character areas, specifically on this webpage, and then the stakeholder group specifically, who is the body that we've been meeting with, they're really, you know, supposed to be acting, we, we begin our, all, all meetings that, you know, we have with them, to say, you know, they are, they're representative of the community, they have to be, you know, thinking about all the residents of the community, not just the ones that, you know, live in their neighborhood or, or whatnot, so we really try and, and encourage as, you know, holistic an approach as, as possible for it. You know, we're heartened by the responses that we've gotten so far on the survey, but we would like, we would like more, and, and to, to get as many, and as much feedback as, as possible, because that's, you know, ultimately, the more feedback that we get, the better the plan is going to be, you know, and that's, that's, that's really the guiding principle that we have.
Well, we have, we have someone else here who would like to have some comments, please.
Can I have it reversed everywhere and like?
Okay, but state your name.
Tom Smiley, resident of St. Simons. Does this information give us access to this?
That would be on, uh,
Can I have one?
Yeah, yeah, you can have one.
And again, I'm very low-tech, probably the lowest of everybody in this room, but I do grow a good garden.
Ooh, what do you grow?
And, and, being one of my points, there's been whisperings and things in the wind about the community garden, and maybe it won't be as it is, and it's been there in some form for many, many years, and it concerns a ninety-six plot, four acre piece of land that is very probably industrial type, maybe to be developed. So, is that an area that, you, you did mention that area, sort of, is that something I can access by doing, so again, very low-tech, I'll probably have to have assistance. But my point being is, the turnout among citizens here sort of reflects a little bit of apathy in some facts, not saying that that's wrong, it's up to us to come, it's like voting, when you only get fifty-two percent or fifty-five percent of people voting, you're not getting any plurality. And I have been involved in politics, not in this state, but others, and I'd love to see more people, but, you know, I'd sort of like to see this try to get us to try to attract more people to these. So if anybody here can help do that, I think it would be beneficial both to you and these people here, to hear the voice, because what I see is, that, this might be post-COVID, but that traffic ain't getting no better. And when you start development, and you start doing this, and I lived on the West Coast for fifty-two years, visited here many years, vacationing, my blood and soul is on East Beach from where I was raised, first job at Vinnie's Red Barn. We need to think about it, Oregon had a moratorium and California started moving up there. They shut down everything. Don't believe me, just look it up. It got to be built too fast, and the infrastructure lagged behind by twenty years. I see this same concept going on here. I read about it, I never understood this SLOs thing as they are, and they have failed in my estimation, and Mr. Eustery, I've met you before, you can prove me different, please do, but if you don't have the infrastructure to catch up, and the village didn't know what was under their ground when they dug it up, Arnold Road didn't know what was under their ground when they dug it up, if you don't have records and you start digging into making contracts for roundabouts and infrastructure, where's the Monet coming from? That's what concerns me, and again, I'm a winner, I am not a stakeholder per se, I'm at the mercy of somebody, but I got to be honest with you, involvement needs to step up, and for your own sakes, as well as the county, and I love this place, we've got to do better on the infrastructure improvements before we get people moving in and tearing down these little old one-bedroom shacks and putting up three-story things, and I never heard, and what happened to the museum and all that stuff? It's rhetorical, you don't have to answer no, but I haven't heard anything. That is going to be hell on wheels when it starts, if it starts. Again, thanks for your talk, and again, if this will get me to where I'm going, thank you, and
Yeah, that, that'll get you straight away, and it's on our website as well, so, so if you'd like to
So we do have time for some more comments, anyone else like this?
Oh, yes, yeah, I'll be putting up a video on this website sometime later this week to show, show off basically what I've been doing here, how you use it, you know, how to submit comments, you know, how to go through it all, so that should, that should help out, in case you need to, to get a refresher if you're a little confusing, so, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? The commission, we have any?
I think she had a question.
Oh, okay. Uh, yes, you're allowed, so come to, so come up to the, so we need to come up to the podium, I'm sorry. But we'd just like to hear you, right?
I'm not allowed to be in that business. I had to really search hard to find this meeting to even attend, and I was able to get it flagged in next door, and that's how I found out about this whole SLOs, I thought it's called SLOs, which I, I don't exactly know what it stands for, but anyway, I get the feeling, it's money, and infrastructure. So, so my question to you is, due to you wanting more input, it would be helpful if residents have means of some sort to be able to find meetings to participate. I know that my own family who lived here for twenty-seven years, they had no clue that this meeting was going on. So, any type of just low-tech, such as flyers around the town, or whatnot, or anything that could help us to know, hey, there's a planning meeting, come, give us your input, or hey, you know, send out a survey, email us, or whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, most, most all of the county business is on the county website, and, and there's a calendar there that, that shows all the meeting dates and what the meetings are, and also the agenda as well.
But just like anything else, honey, you just have to advertise it to people. It, it, it does need to be reached out, you know, kind of have to, it's one thing to say, hey, build it and they will come, it's another thing to say, hey, we're here, let's reach out to the community and get, you know, get, get you guys to know where we are, because I didn't even think about going, and I, I do these things, you know, I, I get involved, but I didn't even think about going onto the county website to look for this, because when you go onto the county website, there's so many information there that you kind of get overwhelmed.
Okay, thank you. Still got about ten minutes or so?
Last comments?
Before we adjourn? Well, here we are, we'll, we'll adjourn this portion of the meeting tonight. At six o'clock, we will reconvene for, for our rendezvous. So, take a break.
Robert, question, is CRC handling applications now? Because we got that one from Circle K in Brunswick. Is the CRC, are they, are they taking over some planning functions? Did you get that application?
No.
Yeah, the Circle K project in Brunswick, they're redoing it, and they put together a project app that we would see, except it was in their format, very nice, very impressive, like this. It was sent to the IPC, so you got it. I think it came yesterday. Yeah, I did see it.
I have a bad habit of deleting things that I, that I don't understand.
I think that's a question for Stephanie.
Yeah, like I said, I said, I hadn't read it yet.
Yeah, I hadn't read it yet.
Yeah, I, I saw, I saw them, I didn't
Yeah, I saw them, I didn't.
Accept this.
Calling me, the order. First item of business on the meeting tonight is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held April 18th, 2023, to any necessary corrections.
Mr. Chair, I saw a little bit of the, we are focused to corrections, just being.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none will call the question, all those in favor, please indicate. Go over the meeting procedures quickly. Planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. Report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, and that's all we'll have tonight, is one public hearing. Public hearing comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position. You should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position and the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate a testimony if it becomes repetitive. Chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. And I do have a conflict on this, on this first item. I will step down and hand the gavel over to Commissioner Brody.
All right, the item on our agenda tonight is ZM 5414, Frederica House Rezone. Consider a rezone for a portion of property located at 96 Atlantic Drive, St. Simons Island, parcel number 0404988, from one family residential R6 to local commercial, to allow a drive-through window and lane to be added to the existing Frederica House restaurant. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Tom Mitchell, Red House LLC, applicant and owner. Stephanie, I'll turn it over to you for presentation.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. We'll just wait for the slides to come back up. It is the same slideshow, just a couple of slides down. So this is a rezone request for this particular parcel to be rezoned from R6 to local commercial. There are some historic lots of record beneath this, as well as former right-of-way of First Avenue that has been abandoned. Next slide, please. There, the purpose of this is to add a drive-through window and a drive-through lane to the rear of Frederica House Restaurant. The First Avenue right-of-way, which I mentioned, from Maple Street to Atlantic, was abandoned by the county on February 16th of 2023. And this is the property. And you can see to the right of the screen, along Frederica is local commercial, where Frederica House, as well as the pharmacy, and that, that shopping, or that area, as well as the convenience store that's currently vacant. And then this, the property to the rear that's kind of a backwards, I guess, L shape. It does come out to Atlantic. And then there are existing houses along Atlantic. Next slide, please. And this image just shows, yeah, shows the historic lots of record and kind of that fuchsia color. And next slide. And so this is the survey of the property. Next slide, please. Next, yeah, thank you. And then this particular, this is their sketch plan that they submitted for their rezone request. So as you can see, this kind of blue area is the current local commercial that Frederica House sits on now. And then the area that's kind of just highlighted in red around the perimeter is the area that they're looking to rezone to local commercial. They are, they are showing that their proposed drive-through window, which would be just an extension of the backside of Frederica House. They are proposing to come in off of Frederica and their drive-through lane would kind of circle through the parking lot. And then they would exit and egress off, off onto Atlantic Avenue. And they are showing some parking spaces along this area. And I will mention, this is their sketch plan. This could change. Right now, based on the size of their planned improvements, it does not require site plan approval. So unless their plans change, you would most likely not see this application again before you. So it would just get a building permit for their improvements if this rezone is approved.
That's a big difference.
And so if we could go back to the last, yeah, to the plan just one more time, thank you. So even this is what they're showing as conceptual, you know, if it is rezoned to local commercial, there could be any of the local commercial uses that could potentially, you know, be on the site. And of course, anything that would be greater than 5% of their existing building would trigger site plan approval, and you all would see that. Next slide, please. And these are your possible motions. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Jake Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicant tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Commissioner, do you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. Stephanie, you just mentioned that we may or may not see an eventual site plan? Can you, I don't understand that.
Sure, if we could go back one slide to the plan again. So the way our site plan approval regulations are written is that if the improvement is under 5% of the existing building, then it does not trigger site plan approval. So because this, this window extension is a pretty small improvement to the Frederica House restaurant, it is below 5%. So if it were larger than that, a larger addition, then you all would see that.
Understood, but the property that we're rezoning is probably more than 50% of the overall. Why would we not take that in consideration?
You mean the size of the property, whether that factors in? It just says the, the site plan section just refers to the building. And there are, you know, multiple historic lot lines on this property. So any, any portion of the building that would be crossing a lot line or not meeting setbacks, they would have to do a combination plat to combine those, those lots into one. Because there are, as one of the images shows, are several different historic lots kind of coming through here.
Okay, well, that brings up another question, Mr. Chair, if I may. So something happened when this was developed. The original parking lot that became commercial was not rezoned at that time? Can you give us some history?
Yeah, that's correct. So just to the north, it's no longer called Thrive Frederica, but the assisted living that's to the north. When it did come through, it was called Thrive Frederica at that time. And I know they had rezoned that property to plan development, as well as on the far left of the screen, that remaining parking lot area that's not kind of highlighted in red or outlined in red, that is also PD and part of the assisted living area. So that, that's rezone, it's PD, but correct, that this middle portion outlined in red, you know, it has been a parking lot, I'm not sure how long that has been. I can't speak to the history of why that wasn't rezoned. But we do see that in other areas, that sometimes a kind of companion parking area to a commercial area may not have been rezoned, although the code. to a commercial area may not have been rezoned, although the code does require that. A commercial parking lot is not allowed use under R six. And so it would need to be rezoned to a commercial use to be allowed as a commercial parking lot in this sense.
Okay, so since we're not gonna, based on your current view, we're not gonna see a site plan application, then I think it's fair that we need to understand the usage for that parcel in terms of making a determination to recommend approval or not. I mean, that's the position we've been put in.
Yeah, I mean, this would be the time, like, for example, you know, there are landscape buffers that are required, you know, between commercial and residential. I mean, this plan is not showing those, but the kind of the leg that comes down to Atlantic, a twelve-foot, you know, type A buffer should be in place between, you know, the commercial and the R six, as well as the bottom or the southern part of that existing parking lot as well. So, you know, they are showing that it's kind of their drive-through area, so spacing might be an issue. They would need to be considering it this time to make sure that they can fit all that in. But yeah, if there's any conditions of the rezone that you would recommend or any additional information that would be of concern, this would be the time.
Well, something you just said, so the, there would be a twelve-foot landscape?
The code requires that. This plan does not show it. We typically, you know, see those on site plans, but because this would not come through site plan approval, I mean, it would be something that the code recommends based off of use. And so staff would be looking at that at the time of building permit to see that those are shown.
Well, twelve feet would basically take up the drive-through room.
So that, yeah, it's a forty-foot wide, yeah, it's a forty-foot wide width of that former Atlantic, or not Atlantic, First Avenue right-of-way. So yeah, between the angled parking spaces and the travel lane, it's a...
But if they were to do the twelve-foot landscape buffer and eliminate the parking, that could be the, that would be compliant?
And that's where, yeah, I mean, the code reads out of the buffer section that the planning commission does have the authority to modify the buffer. So, you know, say, for example, you fell, you know, a six-foot or eight-foot fence would be appropriate, but not the landscaping, that might be something that you all could recommend to the board of commissioners, that placing a fence there. Right, some kind of a barrier, right? Because in all reality, they'd have a fence along the side that the single-family home would see and landscape would be on the opposite side, so it wouldn't really benefit the single-family homeowner.
Does this chance eliminate any parking spaces on that side?
That is a good question. I will defer to the applicant on that. I think there may be one or two that get impacted, but they are adding more along the former right-of-way, because that right-of-way is kind of all wooded and overgrown. Right now, there aren't any spaces, so they are adding spaces through there. If anybody doesn't have any other questions, would the applicant like to come up to present?
Good evening. I like the old mic. Good evening, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for the time tonight to come speak on this project. I believe in previous conversations I've had with others that I might have misspoke when I said that there would be a site plan to review. Stephanie is correct. If there's no more than five percent expansion, then there's not a site plan. However, there's still a county review. Anything we do still has the same amount of review, whether it's a site plan zoning, CP submittal, it all has a county review to make sure those buffers are in place. So, Mr. Nasty, your question, there would be a chance for the county staff to make sure that that is in place. And this right here, I'd like to get off of this image in a second, but this is a sketch plan, this is not a site plan. So in order to make this work, we would, because of the differences in zoning, we would drop the parking along the building, shift the road over, and turn that into a twelve-foot buffer per ordinances. And then, can you swap back to the survey itself? Perfect. Actually, over one, yeah, there you go. So as you can see here, you've got, there's forty foot here, and we've drawn on our software, well, twelve foot plus eleven foot, we have space to get a single drive. This is an egress only, it's not ingress and egress. Basically, they'd still use the same access off of Frederica, and then there'd be the option to use the drive-through window and then to leave out the side onto Atlantic Drive. At this time, we were asking for a zoning approval, not just for the potential of a drive-through, but really to rectify, like the question was stated, why was there not zoning? Well, zoning is tied to ownership. When Thrive came through, they had this as a PD text, but this was not part of the zoning because that was not ownership. They share the same access coming in. If this was all put together, then that would have been rectified back when they did Thrive, is that correct, Stephanie? Yep, so there's a differences of ownership. So now that this owner's coming in, a lot of times when we come up to, I guess you can say, non-conforming zoning, whenever we do a new development, this is a chance for the county and the developer and the owner to kind of clean up that zoning. And this is what we're doing right here, taking it from R six with an existing use for a very long time of a parking lot and making it a local commercial, just like the adjacent parcels. So we can clean up the zoning and have the option for doing a drive-through window if they so choose. If they so choose, it would go through the county staff for approval. And if it's a substantial change to the building footprint, that would require a site plan, which would then come back before the planning commission. With that, I am available to answer any questions.
So you said that the other point of good representation, within that forty feet, do you have room for a landscape buffer, the single drive, and the parking?
No, ma'am, the parking would go away.
Oh, okay.
And so parking requirements would be part of planning and zoning's review as well, to see what the parking requirements are, as well as what parking's there, and it's based on the square footage of the existing use.
So you live in three spaces, is that it?
That's what it looks like now, we're still working through the design process.
Okay.
If parking would go away, because mine is standing most time when there's a business or whatever, they are required to have its number of parking?
Yes, ma'am.
So if parking is going away, I don't know whether this need to go to you or Stephanie or both. And at the time of the business, you were required so much parking?
Right.
Now, parking is going away, so what about...
So if we go into the threshold, it stays non-compliant, and you can't move forward till the county makes it compliant all the way through. So we'd have to meet their requirements by parking standards to meet that threshold. And if we don't, then the drive-through doesn't happen. It still requires a county review.
And Commissioner Brooks, an option for them at that point would be they could apply for a variance for the parking standards and go before the Board of Appeals to request that variance to the parking requirements.
So I think the parking is a valid concern. It looks like, based on the other diagram, you're gonna have to lose three parking spaces, correct?
Based on that diagram, which is not the end design, yes, sir.
I mean, you got a turn there, so you're gonna wipe out a couple of places.
Right, yes, sir, at least two, bare minimum two, yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I've noticed recently, look, full disclosure, I live on Atlantic, down in three hundred blocks, so I pass by this intersection every day. I notice more and more parking in the vacant minute market area during the day. And I don't know if there's a mutual use agreement between businesses there, but if we take away three more slots, that's just gonna put a little more pressure over there. And I don't know what the PDA text says about parking requirement. Is it close to three? Will three make a difference, or...?
Well, for one, I'll answer the question about the parking on the side. I use that pharmacy as well, and a lot of times I pull straight in to whatever is easiest along the front of the existing gas station, just to get easiest access in and out. So that's probably where a lot of that parking comes from. You know, restaurants, they have their highest use, especially Frederica House, in the evenings when the pharmacy is shutting down. So it's kind of a nice use of the two different, you know, businesses where their peak hours are sometimes different. Peak hours for the pharmacy are usually around people's break times, you know, lunch, right after work, that kind of thing. And then it kind of shifts back over to Frederica House. When it comes to doing the architectural, the full plan, that's when parking would be assessed and we'd clear it with county staff as well. For now, we're asking about the zoning use, but still available to answer questions about parking. But that parking would be flushed out with county staff. So, and then if there is a site plan, if it's greater than five percent, then it would come back before the planning commission as well.
So what you're saying is you're not really too concerned about the parking at this point?
At this point, no, sir, we're concerned about the use and rectifying the zoning as it is.
All right. We spoke earlier about the buffer, which may make the driveway more palatable. But if I was the owner of that residential house that they just purchased, and now I'm gonna have a commercial driveway in my side yard, I would be really concerned. Has that owner been spoken with?
They have not reached out to us directly, they did get noticing. Stephanie, did they reach out?
Not that owner, we did hear from another owner, but further down the street.
Okay, so the one next door, whose side yard's gonna become a commercial driveway, you haven't reached out to them?
I personally have not. I do know that the previous owner, I think it was Steve Eckard, had some sort of a tie to the restaurant, and they sold it in two thousand twenty-two. But when you buy a house, part of your title and due diligence is to know what do you own, what do you not own.
And when they bought that house, that driveway was residential. I mean, what's being proposed was R six when they bought that house.
But they didn't own that property.
Correct.
I guess, let me see, I was gonna see if I have a picture of what driveway you're talking about, because I believe the garage is on the opposite side of the house. And I do believe that you've spoken with the, I apologize, the owner is here as well, and I believe he's spoken with the tenant, I'm not sure if he wants to...
Yes, yes, Patrick, I spoke with a tenant who's in the house, current time, he works on Sea Island. The house is in bad shape, it's in disrepair. And I've told him what we plans are, and he has not, I said, tell your fellow that owns the house, I think he lives on Sea Island, what we plan to do. I have not heard from anybody.
Okay.
It says here that a public hearing notice was published in the Brunswick News. Notice was mailed to all the property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property and notice was posted on the subject property prior to May first, correct? So is it safe to assume that the property owner, whoever the owner of record is, something was mailed to that person, plus there's a formal ad taken out in the Brunswick News and whatnot, and then there was actual placard put out?
And there was also the abandonment as well, which would have had the same noticing requirement. So it's kind of two times, back-to-back within the last six months, that they were notified that there were changes happening.
Yeah, I'm familiar with notice requirements. I also remember Stephanie mentioned that we don't always mail those out. Has that changed, or...?
For rezones, we do, we always mail them out. Yeah, within two hundred feet of the property boundary is what we mail. Yes.
We spoke earlier about the buffer, sorry, I got sidetracked on the, if the owner was noticed. We talked about a potential buffer to make this a little more palatable. And so I've heard twelve feet, is that the requirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that just a vegetative buffer, or can we require, is the owner willing to comply with a wall like we did across the street for Oak Plaza?
So I can speak first to what the requirements are, but then we can talk about what he's willing to do, because I can speak to what the ordinance are, and he can speak to what he's willing to do. In terms of a twelve-foot buffer, that is a type A modified buffer where you would have a wall. And so what's required is a six-foot non-seethrough, so non-chain link fence. It has to be, the actual definition is that it's a stucco cover block or brick or split fence block, ribbed block, pressure-treated, naturally rot-resistant wood or PVC solid fence, and they have to be six feet tall as well. So that would be the requirement, it's a six-foot fence that is solid. And that's the way that, and it's not a potential buffer. Any sort of development that happens in that space would have a requirement of that buffer because it would be commercial next to existing residential. So that would be there.
So the masonry wall that we require for Oak Plaza was an additional specification, I guess?
So I guess my question there is, was that a, I don't know if staff or attorney can remember, but was that a PD text, or was that a straight zone?
That was a straight zoning. And, yeah, I think the materials were increased for that requirement, so I think maybe the masonry wall, instead of, you know, doing a wood fence, but...
Yeah, we agreed to a four-foot masonry wall with a two-foot solid board on top.
Well, I'll let the owner speak to what the materials would be.
Yes, sir. That, as you know, the two houses that Mike Carroll is building, it's low, it's low property.
Yeah.
And that's a completely different situation from across the street.
Well, the original requirement was eight feet. And then when we found out the elevation was several feet below...
Right, right.
Then we agreed to lower that requirement to the six foot.
Okay.
And the reason for the masonry was primarily because, you know, wood fence deteriorates over time. They don't last ten, twenty years like we think they do. And we did not want that to become an eyesore. So that fence, while it was a substantial cost to the developer, they were willing to do that because it gave a good visual separation between the commercial and the residential area. We had the same discussion for the proposed storage that was gonna be on Palmetto. They were gonna be required to put in a buffer and a wall over there as well. They ultimately did not go forward with that project, so that was their call. But, so I would just prefer to see this be treated consistently. I think that would be fair to residents. So I'd just like...
Yeah, I can understand that, but I don't think I would be prepared, that would be very costly. That wall was very, very costly, I'm sure, and I don't know how many goes I'd have to sell to pay for that wall. And what I'm just trying to do is add value to my property and fill a need. But there's a limit to what you can, what you could spend to do that.
Yes, I understand.
Now, of course, I've written for years, I've been, my property's in Glen Haven, and I've written all over Glen Haven, and I haven't seen, but the only concrete masonry wall I've seen is that one that we're talking about everywhere. It's all wooden fences. We've got a non-rot, a good fence there, of course.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
But we have these discussions only when we have commercial and residential butting up against each other, okay? There was another wall put in on the other side of Thrive, between Thrive and the first house. Now, that was a ten-foot wall, I think, all right? So, and it goes around, right? That was the compromise, if you will.
I will say, and Matthew, you can speak to this, but as far as like a buffer is concerned, you know, a twelve-foot buffer, you can get a real significant landscape buffer in about thirty-six inches, which is roughly the span of your footer in your masonry wall. That would be very pretty for that neighbor, and green and fluid. I mean, depending on it, you know, if the discussion is to go down from a twelve-foot buffer to some sort of a fence or a wall, landscape could also do the same...
Yeah, I agree.
...thing, the same thing, and be a lot less expensive.
Yeah, I can understand that, but I would be willing to do a nice, not masonry, but a nice wood with a page or something would be a sound buffer as well. Now, a concrete wall is not very much of a sound buffer, but a page is hard. And we would make it look nice, but another point is, too, part of that house is non-compliant because part of that house is actually on my property.
Right.
Did you own that house?
I did not.
Yeah, it was added on to at some point in time. And I don't know if they got a variance or if they even got a building permit. But that condition has existed for probably fifteen-plus years. Longer than that, yeah. So, you know, are they non-compliant now? Not sure. We've kind of allowed that to go on without any, you know, question about it. But I do agree, a buffer... But I do agree, a buffer would have to take into account the position of that current home.
Right, so that current house, you can see on the survey, it's a little fuzzy on the screen, but I want to say it's .8 feet over. So if you were to do 12-foot off of that with a buffer, I mean, that's, that's pretty substantial. And so almost that would make that encroachment almost a mute point. If it's, if we were to try to put the road right on the property line, with a wall right on the property line, yes, I could see that could be an issue, but since we have to do the buffer, it'll kind of extend beyond that, well beyond that encroachment.
All right.
Any more?
Well, you're talking about shifting then the driveway closer to the existing buildings versus it being on the residence side.
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
How will you address the broadband boxes and the utilities at Atlantic?
Right, so we have 12 feet plus about another 11 feet before you get to that box. And so I have it scaled out on here. I want to say it's 12 plus 10.49 feet. That gives you the space allowed. But also, in this case, you can get with the utility companies and move poles. If they're going to expand service, a lot of times they'll do that at their cost. If you're going to, you know, if they're not going to get any additional houses or hookups, then a lot of times they'll put that cost on developer. So at this time, or at the time when they're starting to do the full design and cost analysis of, is it worth putting the expansion on the restaurant? The cost for the road and the cost for the utility move, that would come into consideration for the owner whenever it comes time, if they want to look at moving that, that box. But we coordinate with the utility companies for those kinds, very frequently, actually.
Could I, would we be required to move it? We can get around that box.
I'm saying you'd coordinate with the utilities to see the spacing, and they make the call. And then the call from them is whether or not you have to pay for it, or they'll do it at their own dime.
So you're saying there's room for a buffer and for the driveway without moving the cabinets?
I'm saying there's 12-foot plus another 10.49 foot between the property line and the cabinets.
What would be the width of the driveway, then?
If you could, so standard drive aisle is anywhere from nine to 12 feet. So it's, it's enough to fit by there.
No more questions?
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant at the moment?
So just to clarify, we're just considering the rezone for the portion of the property from R6 to local commercial. Then if we approve that, then the earnest is on them to go through the whole process and figure out if it's cost prohibitive to put a 12-foot buffer, if they've got to move utilities, if it's even worth their time. And at that point, they'll still have to go and put forth for a building permit under which time all that will still be looked at to make sure that it's conforming. So all we're really doing is just trying to take the R6 to local commercial to clean up this parking lot that's been there for 20, 30 years.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes.
Yes. And then it will go to, to the.
There will still be checks and balances.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing, open for public comment. So if anyone is present that has any questions or would like to make a statement, may I go?
Joel Willis, live on St. Simons Island, Madam Chair, Commissioners. After eight years, I thought, maybe I might miss this commission. But I don't really miss it at all, I tell you. You know, Mr. Mitchell has been paying taxes on that lane for 33 years. And he just now got the county to finally abandon it to recognize the fact that he owns it. When you pay taxes on something, you own something. So he's worked a lot, he's spent a lot of money just trying to get to the point where he is now. And I'm really surprised that nobody has brought up the issue that what this really does, it creates a better, safe way to get out of Frederica House. If you go to Frederica House at night, and you're trying to come back out on Frederica Road, turn left to go north, there's a tree right down there by Thrive or Vitality. It's hard to see. So by people being able, even the people who are not doing the takeout part, can still come out this way to Atlantic and get to the light. And they'll have a safer egress out of that parking lot. Also, I did a quick count just while y'all were talking, there's over 60 parking places there already. There's probably more than that. All that parking that Vitality uses is limited till 5:00 PM every day. Frederica House has exclusive use of that parking after those hours. So giving up three parking places is not a problem at all. You know, we've had a lot of complex issues come before. The eight years I was on this, this is one of the no brainers. And I recommend that you, as presented.
Thank you.
Huber, I'm President of St. Simons. My horse and his race is I got rental property that's just outside the 200-foot notification requirement of this. So didn't get a notification, but I do pay attention. Don't agree with Mr. Willis's recommendation? Not against the drive-through, let me be clear on that. But what's presented here is not workable. If you do a chicken count of the parking spaces that are shown on the plans here, it's a net zero. It takes seven away, total of seven away, and add seven. And again, I recognize the comments earlier that this is just a sketch, it's not the final plan. But that's what's shown on there. But let me give you a little bit of history. I spoke against the conversion of IDEC to Thrive, okay? I also spoke against Frederica Pharmacy, predominantly for traffic and parking. So let me take a little bit more history. When we talked about, and help me out, the, the new, new development right across, right across Atlantic, the design organization. Anyhow, when that came up for discussion, we talked about traffic, okay? They had an, they proposed, that plan proposed an egress from their parking lot, again, not this project, but across, across Atlantic. And it was nixed by the county engineer because of interference with the intersection. This egress point is only about another 60 feet further west than that point, and it's directly across from the egress that was ultimately allowed on Atlantic for the other development we're speaking about, okay? So, folks, pardon my French, but we're getting about 15 pounds of crap in a five-pound bucket here. And Frederica House in history, okay? That was part of the availability of having Thrive get their, noted their approvals, okay? Has that, my question is, has that agreement transferred over to Vitality?
Yes.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay, all right, question and answer. I guess it's called Vitality now. I lose track of who's who.
It's Vitality.
Just a living. You have shared parking between Vitality, Frederica House, Frederica Pharmacy, and the convenience store. Now, I don't know if the convenience store was ever written into it, but by default and no demarcation, I drove by this afternoon, and the whole row, all but one space, I think there's eight or nine across the front of the convenience store, all but one space was occupied when I drove to this meeting this afternoon. That's also used as an overflow parking for La Plancha and Brogans. So one thing that drives me absolutely batty in listening to, and Mr. Duncan and Joel, you've heard me speak on this before, the silo decision-making made by this body, the Island Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners, and staff is absolutely an Achilles heel for the quality of life here on the island, all right? So we've got our blinders on talking about what the applicant is asking for. That's great. And we need to answer his question, yes or no. I agree with that. But to make that decision in a, in a, in a, a box that doesn't look over the wall is a problem. The discussion that's happened already here tonight on, do we get a site plan or don't we get a site plan? Okay? It strikes me that this body has the ability to request, with the approval of the Board of Commissioners, a site plan for this activity because of the complications that we're talking about. So if you take the total regarding parking, if you take the total.
You've got about 30 seconds left to the time.
If you take the total parking that's needed, Thrive and all of those, I'll guarantee you, what you got there is not enough. And if we're taking away the proposed seven, you're not going to make it. The application is also deficient. I appreciate Mr. Esri recusing himself, but that was not declared on the application. It's a blank. Donations, it's a blank, okay? Did anybody ask the question to make the application complete? There is a requirement for that information to be provided, not provided. So therefore, the application is not complete. And the traffic review, it's ticked off by the traffic review on your, on your application? I'd like to see the language that that review took place. Because I guarantee you, if you had a problem with the development across the street, you got the same problem here, and it's not being, not being addressed. So while I agree that, for the benefit of the business, we ought to do that, this is not the plan to do it, and particularly when you do away with parking, as has been discussed tonight, to get your buffer in, okay?
Okay, thank you for your time. I would like to just make one quick comment that my mother-in-law is at Vitality, and I have, I've never seen that back parking lot full, ever.
Just for, just for clarification, the parking lot now, I haven't been back there in a long time. It's a parking lot, correct?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
And it is, so basically what we're doing is that's a parking lot being used for commercial use. It's already existing, it's already there. We're just talking about basically bringing the zoning to, to be with the other prop, adjacent properties.
Correct.
So we're not creating a parking lot here.
Yes, correct.
Certainly.
Does anybody have any other statements, questions?
Yeah, just to follow along with Mr. Nash's comments. So we're trying to correct a mistake from the past, and that was, we didn't rezone the, the commercial parking lot when the Thrive was created. And there was a comment about, well, we've paid taxes on this right-of-way, previous right-of-way. But that was probably all in that one parcel. We're not sure what would be the appropriated value of the taxes paid on that, that abandoned right-of-way, right? But, but I can appreciate, you know, being a taxpayer, wanting to be able to use your land. I was just curious, it would have been less complicated had this been debunked. We rezone the parking lot as, as needs to be done. And then the, the abandoned right-of-way be discussed separately. But we put all this together, unfortunately. And we, we've had to get into the, the usage discussion, not just the rezoning, because there will not be a usage discussion subsequently. So I don't think it's quite fair to, to kind of, you know, glaze over the fact, hey, we're only talking about zoning here. All right? I think we, we need to drill down and, and consider the usage properly. I wish it was as simple as it was suggested. It's not that simple. We've got a house that's encroached into this abandoned right-of-way. We are trying to change the zoning from residential to commercial. And then we've had this lingering, non-zone, improper zoning for the parking lot for, for seven or eight years, I guess. So I don't think it's quite as simple as it was made out to be. Now, I would, I would like, I mean, could you consider doing just a loop through the parking lot for the drive-through and not need the residential right-of-way as an exit?
I mean. The, the problem, the problem, let me speak to that. The problem with that would be if you looked around, you're going to have, you're going to have traffic. It's a small area between.
Mr. Mitchell, if you could go to the podium, just so we can capture your comments on the record, thank you.
And I appreciate Mr. Nash's eloquent comments, I do. I, I live here, I have home, I've lived here for 50 years, and I understand the traffic issues all over. There's a monster traffic issue at, at, at Harris Teeter in the CVS area. I have sat through five or six or seven light changes. By the time the traffic, the Harris Teeter people come in there, and the CVS people come in, they fill up the stack lane, and you just sit there, and you sit there, and sit there. Everybody's, everybody's gone for this. So we got, we got monster traffic issues on St. Simons right now, and we all know it. I don't know what we're going to do about the BATS proposal. You got the people at Hamilton Landing raising cane about it. Just, I heard them talking about that. I could see, we got monster traffic issues on this island. We all live here, we all trying to make a living here. And I understand everybody's concerns, I really do. And I, I've got, I've got concerns about the guy living in the house as well. But could we possibly do this? Could we clean up the zoning for the, the 200, the 200, the 100 feet from the edge of that man's property to the old Maple Street and clear up the PD on, on the parking lot that was never zoned properly, and address this later? Would that be, I mean, that would satisfy me for now. And leave that, right now, leave that property there, R6.
Well, yeah, if I may, Ms. Chair, that, that's what I question. Why, why is it bundled together?
Okay, I, I understand, Patrick, your concerns.
And I, I mean, it's, staff would have to give us some guidance on that. Yeah.
So, so there are historic lots of record that are, are beneath this. And so I don't believe any of this has been previously combined. I think all those lots are still intact. And so the, the rezone could be done based off of the boundaries of the existing lots of record. So the tax parcel is, is just a combination for taxing purposes. So that could be a, a way to, to split this, if that's the commission's desire, is to look at, look at a split that way.
If we could clean the zone, excuse me, if we could clean the zoning up behind the Frederica House and the parking lot now, clean that up now, that's, that's been a long, I've known it. And I, I have, I have ignored it for years because it hadn't come up. But if I have to sell that property, it needs to be cleaned up, certainly.
Correct.
And I would still own the lot, or, and I would still own Atlantic Drive, and I could, I've got a buildable lot there. Which, in a way, I was doing the property owner a favor. I was going to let him keep his encroachment in, in, in there and, and not ever, not ever have any issue with him on the fact that he's encroached on 7 feet of my property. I'd build him a nice buffer. But if we could do that at present time, I would be happy. And then later on, we could, we could try to work something else out. But I, I, I do need to reach out to that property owner, and I agree with what, what you said. I've reached out to his, his.
Tenant.
His tenant, and I've told his tenant what we were going to do, and the man has never called me, so.
Well, fair enough.
Okay.
To just clarify, it would be, the owner is suggesting that we just rezone the three lots, the three, R6 lots of the parking lot and.
Take out the Atlantic.
Take out the other one?
And that's what Mr. Romfer and I were just talking about. So at, at this stage, it's, we really can have the applicant change it, but the, but if part of your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners is that you are only recommending rezoning a portion of the property, and that can be part of your recommendation. So because the entirety of the application has come forward, it really can't be a change at this point. But, but clearly, the applicant is, is on board with that, if that is the commissioner's choice to go that route. So anything you want to add to that?
I, I, I'm not exactly sure what to do here, I know. But, but I, I mean, personally, that is not something that, that I've been recommending unless that's.
So.
Unless, unless that's what everybody else is, is on board with, but.
Ms. Chair, I may, so there, there are two options?
I under, I understand that, but we can't, we can't, we, we can make the, the request, but I'm just saying, I don't necessarily, I don't personally agree with that. I don't know, how about everybody else up here with that? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's what the applicant. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's what the applicant 100% wants, but that's not what I'm going to pay me here for.
You know, I know, I know, I know it's, I know it's an issue, and I, Mr. Nash, I know Mr., it, it, the commissioner's going to, going to be, and, and, you know, we can do it either way. We can try, try that, or we can go to the commissioners and see if we can get it approved, if you, if you folks put several requirements, including the, the, but I can't afford to do, and, and I figure that a, a, a wall, a wood wall, I can't afford to do that. A concrete wall, a masonry wall, you know, all the way down, I can't, I can't, certainly I can't afford to do that. I'd have to, I'd have to do a lot of other things to get it rid, I get to build stuff, and I'm in the twilight of my career anyway, so, you know, I just, I wouldn't want to do that. I'm just trying to reach a compromise to get, get what I need to get done, part of what I need to get done tonight. We can go either way, though.
Mr. Attorney, can you concur that that is something that we can do with his request of zoning the three historic lots as local commercial to rectify that and keep that as R6? Is that something that you think is allowable?
It, it can be done. My question back to the applicant, Mr. Mitchell, and to the Planning Commission members, is there's a couple of different ways to get there. If Mr. Mitchell is saying tonight that he wants to essentially withdraw the application request to the extent of the, you know, the, the alley or the, the First Street, and maintain the application for the other parts, then that's what the IPC will act on. If he says that he wants to proceed for it, and he wants a, a vote up or down on the entirety, then the IPC will make a vote on the entirety. And you can recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this portion, not of that portion, approval of the entirety, approval of the entirety with conditions. I mean, you've got options, but I think the, the fundamental question that I have, or that the Planning Commission should have to the applicant, is does he want, is he asking to withdraw that portion of his request, of the application? And if, if he needs some time to think about that before y'all vote, then I think that's appropriate as well.
Yeah, at this time, we'd like to remove this portion of the alley from the rezone request to allow the, the existing-
Show the buffers with a site plan in conjunction with a zoning.
And ju, just to be clear for everybody, that if that happens, that, you know, when you come back, that'll be a brand-new application, go through the process, advertising, everything. Okay, so we'll make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
And I think just, just to clear on the record for the boundaries, it looks like it's the southern 100 feet of former First Avenue right-of-way, because it, you're still including the northern part of First Avenue plus your historic lots of record.
100 feet on the north, I mean, 100 feet on the north, I might ask, would that be, take that commercial and clean up the PD on the, on the parking lot that's been there?
Okay. Okay. So it's only the, yeah, the southern, you know, 100 feet by, by 40 feet in width of that former First Avenue right-of-way that you're withdrawing from the application?
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed zoning decision with the modification of taking out the southern 100 feet by 40 feet of the former First Avenue.
All right, all in paper? All right. Thank you.
Can we ask about that Circle K? The Circle K application?
Oh, the Circle J application.
Is there a process change happening?
We, this is S.
Okay. Okay. If I can ask staff a question. We received an application via email yesterday for a mainland planning project, but we were copied, and it shows the CRC, I guess managing that application, is, is there a process change going on?
So, yeah, what you all received, did you receive it from the CRC? Is that how it came to you? Okay, so y'all, I think, are on a distribution list. So that's the Development of Regional Impact, and so there's certain projects of a certain scale that are required to go through a state, a statewide review process called Development of Regional Impact, and our, and the Regional Planning Commission is the entity that handles that, so they send it out to a lot of different entities to gather comments, to see if there's any issues. And so that, that Circle K application is down by exit 29, and it's, it's a number of diesel pumps, that there's a certain number where it triggers the DRI, so they happen to have that specific number of diesel pumps they're adding to the site, and that's why it's going through that process.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else you need to discuss, or you guys can interpret a motion for adjournment? All right, thank you, everybody.